And we will call the meeting to order. First agenda item is approval of our minutes from the June 23rd, 2025 meeting. I entertain a motion to approve those.
Yeah, I had a note on those. On item 4E, my recollection was that I abstained from that, the same as I did 4D. And the abstention's noted in 4D, but it's not noted in 4E, and it reflects that I seconded something. So, I just want to maybe look into that, because I did not review the recording to determine if I did do that.
Okay. All right, so are you making a motion with those corrections for?
A motion, I don't know who did second it, though. You know, I think we kind of have to look back. Is that possible, Clara, to do that?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
I can, I'll pull up and listen to it, and I should be able to identify the reasons.
Can we hold them over till our next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. I would move to just hold that agenda item over till the next meeting.
Okay, so there's a motion to table the approval of the meeting minutes until the next meeting, as we look for some corrections. Are there second to that?
Yes, second.
Any more discussion? Any other corrections?
I have one, it's nothing in the minutes, but it was something that was a misunderstanding on the last, the last meeting. And I see Mr. Burns in the, in the public. I had made the statement that Mr. Burns had received approval to build a garage within the city limits, and that was misinformation that I received. So, I would like to correct that. He did not, without stipulations.
Okay, and I don't know if that was formally noted in the minutes.
It was not. I didn't see in the minutes.
Okay, very good. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor of tabling the meeting minutes for prior corrections till next meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. We are tabling the minutes. The next item is approval of our agenda. Aside from the meeting minutes, we have a public hearing, as well as reviewing a city ordinance, and then any old business and adjourn. Is there a motion to approve our agenda?
I approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion, additions, deletion, discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Agenda is approved. Onto new business. We have 4A, our public hearing to consider an interim use permit. We'll call on Clara Beck to walk us through the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you are feeling deja vu, it's because you have seen this address before. Jill, are you able to click through for me? I don't have the mouse. Yep, just click. All right. So, the address in question is 112 Washington Avenue East, which is just down the road that way. The Planning Commission and City Council had previously approved an interim use permit for that property for cannabis retail back in, I believe it was the end of April, early May, sometime in there. That permit was rescinded by the City Council when it became apparent that the applicant was, or the previous business that was intending to go into that location had reverted to a different location where they'd been previously located, and they sought an IUP for that location instead. So, the IUP that had initially been granted was rescinded. I just want to also remind Commissioners that approval of the IUP in a B3 zone for cannabis retail is a land use decision only. This body is not discussing the licensing or registration of any cannabis businesses. It is specifically just the zoning and land use question. Jill, if you want to pop it ahead for me. So, some facts about that location. It's Zone B3, which is our general business district. It is surrounded by mixed use. There is some commercial on that block along with various different kinds of businesses. And what is proposed by the applicant at this point is interior-only renovations, though the landlord has indicated that there is some further work to be done on the brickwork on the side of the wall. But that's unrelated to this application. That was simply comments made by the, by the building owner. Jill, if you want to pop it ahead one more, please. I am going to run through the proposed findings. They are very similar to the first time that you saw this, the same location, just because not much has changed, other than the applicant. But just for the record, we are just, we're going to run through those. The proposed findings are that all criteria are met for the requirements for an interim use permit, which are the same as our conditions for conditional use permits, with the added condition that there is a time limit related to the interim use permit, which is five years. So, first, it was determined that it's not going to be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the neighborhood or the city. I'm basing the criteria met on the fact that this is a legal business in, in the state of Minnesota at this point. It will be regulated by state and local regulations. Number two, it's going to be harmonious with the general and applicable specific objectives of the comp plan and code provisions. As a reminder, the city of Fergus Falls does not have a comprehensive plan. However, the City Council did determine that cannabis retail is an allowed use in the B3 zone with a, an interim use permit. One more, Jill. Thank you. Number three, it's going to be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained so as to be compatible or similar in an architectural and landscape appearance with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity, and so on. Criteria is met. Again, it is only interior renovations that have been indicated with the application, which are not going to generate, and this is per discussion with, with the County Assessor's Office, but interior renovations do not generally constitute enough of an effect to change property values in an area. Number four, it's going to be served adequately by existing essential public facilities and services. Again, criteria is met. The building is, is and has been adequately served by public facilities and services. It's been a commercial use in the past. It will continue to be a commercial use. Number five will not involve uses, activity, processes, materials, equipment, and conditions of operation that will be hazardous or detrimental to any person's property or the general welfare because of the excessive production of traffic noise, smoke, fumes, glare, or odors. Criteria there is met. It is only retail activities that are proposed as part of the business licensure, so there is not going to be any manufacturing or consumption of cannabis on site. Jill, if you want to move ahead. Will have vehicular ingress and egress to the property. Again, this is an existing building, an existing commercial location that has been properties, properly served by ingress and egress in the past. Nothing there will be changing. Will not result in the destruction, loss, or damage of a natural, scenic, or historic feature of major importance. Criteria is met there. The property is not historically designated, and it is far enough away from a historically designated building that is the river in, not to interfere in any way with the view shed. And then, just as a reminder, it is an interim use, so while we're meeting all of our conditional uses, our requirements for conditional use, we also have the added time limit. And it is stated in our interim use permit that it will be up to five years, or until something else occurs that is either written in as a condition, or if a permit condition isn't met in future. And then, I did want to just note that in prior discussions about the IUP for this location, it was brought up whether or not the building itself was within 250 feet of a public park that is regularly used by minors. And based on the actions of the City Council at that time, it is, it was determined by a majority of members that that was not a concern. So, I have noted that reasonably, it is indicated that it is still not within that 250-foot buffer zone of a public park with an attraction for a minor. So, Jill, if you want to go one more. Therefore, the recommended action for this interim use permit will match the recommendations on the other interim use permits that this body has seen related to cannabis retail. First is a five-year timeframe for the interim use. Business hours are going to be limited from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. No consumption on site, including samples. And this one is unique to this property, but it is based on the fact that there are residences above. The property owner must obtain and retain written acknowledgement from each resident, residential tenant stating that they have been informed of the business use permitted under an interim use permit, and that copies of that acknowledgement must be made available to the city upon request. The property owner has agreed to that stipulation and has already put on, has already collected those acknowledgements from the tenants, and those can be made available to the city upon request. So, that is my presentation.
Thank you, Clara. Is there any other questions for Clara on the staff report before we open the public hearing? Clara, just as, to add some clarification, there was an IUP, interim use permit, issued for this property before and was rescinded due to the applicant wanting to move, correct? And that was approved by Planning Commission and City Council.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, anything else from the Commission?
No, thank you for pointing that out.
All right, we will go ahead and open the public hearing. If you wish to speak on this matter, please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Thank you for your time. Mark Layton, Fergus Falls. Initially, when the dry cleaners had this building, what was the condition of the building? Was the city condemning it? Did they have concerns on the roofline?
Hey, man.
Hi, how you doing? I'm not aware of the condition of the building. I know that there were concerns with the outside brick wall, but those were addressed.
Okay, because I know they had, when the dry cleaner was there, I did not see anything written. I just heard a lot of conversation regarding, you know, the condition of the actual building.
Well, and I'm sorry, Mr. Layton, but I think that would probably fall in the lines of working with the building department and building code versus the zoning aspect of it. And that's what we're here tonight to discuss, the zoning aspect of it.
I was reading one of the conditions, if it was adequate facility.
Yep, yep.
We do have a concern of it being under 250 feet. And it's interesting that we did request approval from the applicant's tenants, but many times I hear other conditional use permits or this IUP. We've not had any conversation with neighbors, and I think that is valid as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Layton. All right, does anybody else wish to speak on the public hearing? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We'll bring it back to the Commission for Discussion. No discussion, we'll entertain a motion to approve the, or deny the IUP.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the IUP. We have a second. I'm assuming this comes with recommendations that were in the staff report. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any other discussion from the Commission? Any other discussion? Clarifications or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. That motion carries. So, the, just for clarification, the IUP process now goes to the City Council. They have final say on whether that's going to be approved or not. Tonight, we basically are holding the public hearing for the IUP and getting it through Commission. That further moves on to City Council. With that, we will move to new business 4B, reading ordinance number 69 on the city code. I believe this has to do with residential garages. So, I will call on Clara to kind of give us an update on the, that's in the staff report.
I'm actually going to have you read the letter from the mayor and from there.
Okay. Yes. So, we do have a letter to the Planning Commission from Mayor Hicks, and regarding ordinance number 69, it says, "The City Council has reviewed the ordinance regarding the ability for residents to request a conditional use permit to allow standalone garages on residential lots within the city limits. The language includes several points that are aimed at maintaining the look of the neighborhood to avoid mismatches. A draft of the language changes have been prepared by the city attorney. As an included in your packet, as per statute, the council is required to send this to the Planning Commission for consideration and review. We ask that you consider this in the form as it is presented and endorse the recommendation. It is my understanding that you have 60 days from the 21st of July to make a decision. I thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. Regards, Mayor Hicks." Clara, anything else to add to, to that? Okay. I guess, is there a motion regarding the ordinance number 69?
I have motion to approve it.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? Any discussion from the Commission?
What are the, what are the conditions that have to be? I never looked through this, I guess.
Yep. So, I think the, if you look at Section 1 lists basically a lot of the conditions, you know, all the way through letter M. My understanding is they want the conditional use permit portion of this, so it would result in a public hearing, right? So, it would give interveners a chance to either oppose, support, make recommendations to what it, what it is. But I think, you know, a lot of, we'll say the conditions are pretty well-defined in the ordinance itself.
And just as a general comment, this ordinance language has been vigorously discussed at the City Council level, I think, as a procedural matter. This exact language, okay? This goes down to the Planning Commission, and then, I believe, back up to the City Council for approval.
Correct. And I think Mayor Hicks's letter referenced that, that it's a state statute that we have to provide a recommendation on it.
Yeah. I guess before you do that, with making a motion to approve this, I'd like to see the Planning Commission come back and look at this a little further. I don't think the language is inclusive enough of what it needs to define. I know it's your job to, you know, look at balancing between the quality of our neighborhoods and growth. And right now, what we're doing is trading tax base on a garage for what potentially could be a house and a garage. We have to look at what the long-term vision is going to be, not, not just short-term. And right now, your job is not to rubber stamp what the City Council comes back with to you. Your job is to, to review whatever further items need to be reviewed. Example of a situation in our neighborhood, 2727 Lakeview Drive, there's a garage on a lot that should have had a $500,000 home. The city's collecting 1,454 in taxes, where if there was a $500,000 home there, you'd be collecting close to $6,000. There's another lot, 2825 Lakeview Drive. They built a airplane hangar there. The garage is bigger than the house. It's bigger than anything in the neighborhood. This morning, I went by there. There's 10 units sitting in the driveway of recreational whatever. This is not the look that we wanted for our neighborhood. But the way that this thing is drafted right now, what's on your plate, it's open, open season for anything.
How it's drafted would be for them to apply for a conditional use permit. So, the ordinance doesn't just give them right to do that. They would still have to come in front of the Planning Commission, get a conditional use permit, go through that process, get reviewed by City Council.
I'm saying that there still needs to be more put into that draft. None of you did a real in-depth. You received it Thursday. The mayor wrote his letter. I'm asking you to, let's have one more work session on this for a little more language in it.
Sure. So, I mean, the Planning Commission has done a lot of work around this and held a lot of discussion on it. And ultimately, the City Council took action that maybe wasn't always aligned with the Planning Commission. So, they made a suggestion, and that's what's in front of us tonight.
No, and I realize that. You, the mayor had asked for public input before. You guys went out and looked for public input. Most of you at this meeting last month said that your constituents that you talked to were not in favor of this. I'm, I'm in favor of a conditional use permit, but I'm also in favor of putting a little more bite into the ordinance here. That's a little more specific.
Thank you.
And so, if you can...
What specifically are you asking that we add to this?
Well, even, even the size of the garage on a lot.
That's listed in here.
Pardon me?
That's listed in here.
Fifty percent.
Of the, of the, of the land mass.
Yeah, then you don't have room to put, build a house on that. If we were talk, also looking at what small houses might be, we're, we're basically landlocked in Fergus for housing space. We, we, you know, we talk about the housing shortage. There's been talk about tiny homes. Now, tiny homes, I think, are, you know, they're, they're very small. But if you looked at a small house, that's 1,000 to 1,500 square feet. And then, you're talking about that, well, some of these lots weren't big enough to build a house on because they were, didn't meet the 60-foot. Well, houses were built on 50-foot lots before, too, and you still have a 10-foot setback. You can build something that's 30 by 40. Well, if you looked at these lots on what a 50-foot lot by whatever, figure out what the size of the garage would be, you can get a one-ton duly standard cab, long box, in a garage that's 26 by 30. Take that and deduct that from the size of the lot and figure out what size house you could also put on that.
What other language do you want in here?
I don't want to see a quonset, a steel building.
I believe that's defined in here, where there has to be, the exterior must have a uniformity, and it has to have specific changes within the structure, so it can't be a quonset, or it can't be just a plain old steel building.
Also could be part of the conditions when it comes time.
Yeah, but let's put it in the language right now, because I have examples in my neighborhood of two of them already. And if we're meeting others...
But are those standalone primary use structures, though?
No.
Well, that's...
Well, one of them is. Yeah, one of them is. One didn't even meet the criteria for the landowner isn't there. You know, it's an individual lot.
Do you know how that was approved, or was it just built in?
I, I have no idea.
Yeah.
But I'm, I'm just saying that it happened.
Yeah, I understand.
And so...
And I think that with this, we're trying to establish that there has to be an investment of time, money, to come in front of a group of people who are going to either, you know, exclude that property from that potential. And I think that we're going to look strategically, and we're going to really say, okay, how long are you in the long run here? Is this, is this, is this where you're going to stay? Is, even though we don't know that, that's going to be part of the decision process, at least for me.
No, and I, I think that just giving this thing a couple more weeks with discussion with the public.
I would like your piece of paper, if we could get a photocopy of that.
Sure.
So that when we're discussing that, if that's what we approved.
You got it.
To look at what your specific recommendations are.
I can even put some more on here. The other thing that I think that we're, that's confusing is when you guys are talking about ADUs, accessory dwelling units. And in most communities, that's, that's an apartment built over a garage, or in addition to, on a property where the, the owner lives there, for, for the most part. When we're talking about accessory dwelling units, and it's a garage on a standalone where the landowner, or the person doesn't live there, it's, I guess I, it's, you're inviting...
I understand.
Challenges as to the look to what happens in the neighborhood. The other thing, too, is that you guys had, one of the things in there was that the garage needed to be built on whatever was in the language. Well, I know of garages, steel buildings, that are, they don't even have a concrete floor. So, when you refer to other language of the language or whatever, you know, I know that there's garages built that way. So, yeah, I, I just ask that you guys table us and have one more meeting with the public, and let's get it into the language before this gets approved.
Okay, thank you.
Please.
Hi, Tom Kingston. I've supported many ideas that she said. And a little background on myself, I own a lot on 1926 Pine Circle. The house was torn down as a result of a fire. Next door, I owned an adjacent lot in 1930. So, it's the same situation where I could build a house and then build a storage building next door. Yet, I stand here opposed to the idea of building a standalone storage unit. Again, that's on Connell Drive, right off Connell Drive, Pine Circle. Just recently, I bought a house at 2601 Lakeview Drive, just down the street from a house that, dang it.
Laurie.
Laurie, thank you, Laurie. I was referencing. And I bought that house because it has a vacant lot adjacent to it. And I wanted to avoid a situation where somebody was going to put a storage unit across from my driveway. So, I have two different pieces of property in town. And so, and yet, I am standing opposed to this without a lot more information. I apologize, because I haven't done the research prior to this meeting. So, I wanted to give you a little credence there. And I also had the same experience with a neighbor, Dick Young, who you may know pretty well. I was neighbors to him on Pine Circle, and he bought a lot across the street from him and wanted to build a storage building. And he did build a storage building without any accommodation. The one that Laurie's referring to, at least appears like it might have a living space. Dick Young's doesn't. And I went before the Planning Commission at that time in opposition to it. He was putting it right square at the end of my driveway, taking out two beautiful sugar marbles. Well, he bought the lot, so I guess he can do that. But I asked him, you know, "Dick, why, why don't you just put it across from your driveway, so if you're going to be using it?" He said, to quote, "I don't want to have to look at that garage." I think that's, the nubs are what we're getting to. We can talk about landlocked for building houses and so on, but I think we really have to, to look at some of these other things. I had a couple more questions that may be addressed, and I don't know. But now, if this is a situation where I can build a garage on an adjacent lot, I can find two houses in town, buy one, tear the other one down, and build a storage lot, and then rent out the first one? I don't think that's really an intent. I understand it's a personal intent, that I just need more space for my stuff. As a 2825 seems to find fish houses, deer stands, fishing boats, campers, trailers, car haulers, motorcycles, and I don't know what else. This is the other problem, is that the shed never stands alone. It accumulates all the stuff that should be in the shed, but it's like every garage in town. Drive by every garage, and I don't care whether you're out by the golf course or anywhere else, when the doors are up, the garage is full, and the cars are in the driveway. And I, I see that as a real problem. The last comment that I quickly wanted to find out is, is this gets approved, I, I have a house, I build a storage shed on my lot next door. Is that two property tax IDs? Do I sell the shed? Do I sell the house? Do I have to sell them both together? I, I don't understand what happens. You're accommodating the current occupant, but occupants serve five to eight years. I mean, nobody buys... I mean, nobody buys a house for forty-five years anymore. So I'm wondering what happens five years down the road, ten years down the road, when that very earnest property owner, and in all truthfulness, claimed that they were just going to have this nice-looking building, and the next guy is not. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We do have a motion for you approve the ordinance in a second. Is there any discussion from the commission?
Yeah, so my view of this is, we sent our recommendation up. The recommendation was rejected, and now we've been presented with this. So I think something along the lines of this goes forward. I do hear the point that we need to still have our discussion and do our due diligence and spend the time on it that the council may not be able to spend on it, knowing that once the council gets whatever product we send up, they don't have to accept a rejected wholesale. They can pick and choose components that they like or don't like. So my only thought would be that there, that this does lack some of the things that we've talked about, and I think we've heard people talk about as we've discussed this. Things like requiring a home somewhat nearby. There's been talk about across the street or within a certain footage. Talk about positioning this, the garage, so that a home could be built in the future to kind of mitigate that risk to tax base. Just some things like that. So there are some things that we have discussed that aren't in here. So that would be my thought is, you know. And, you know, I guess I, as far as timing, I think I get that both ways. We did just, kind of just receive this. However, this is not a brand-new proposal. This is in line with a few months of discussion. So I just would want to make sure that everybody's heard on what the points are here. Because that goes to meeting the elements to get to build in the first place. You know, one of the things that's been talked about, and one of the reasons why you'd look at this on a case-by-case basis, is to be able to build a garage on lots where a home could not be built. Well, that's not in here, and maybe that's not going to be in here. But again, that's something we talked about that should maybe be reexamined. So that's my thought. I do think, from a timing perspective, I would just defer to the rest of you. I think last time I was the one that kind of said, we've talked about this enough, let's just move it forward. Well, here we have something a little different. So if we wanted to take it up at the next meeting, I'd be fine with that. If people haven't had the chance to review, if we want to talk it out now, I guess my afternoon's free, so.
Okay, any other discussion?
Yeah, so I thought we had a pretty robust discussion the first time around as well, when we denied going forward with this. And, you know, to your point, it sounds like the council said, yeah, we understand you don't want this, but we want it. So here's what you have to work with. So while I would still not vote for an ordinance that would allow this, I think we should make a good faith effort to review it and provide recommendations. I don't think we have to recommend approval, but we could say, you know, we've denied it, but if you're going to go forward with it, here are some suggested revisions. I think that's, I mean, that would be my proposition here. And I would like more than three working days that we've been given to review this and do a better, you know, get some comments in here, flush it out a little bit more. So I would not be ready to vote on an approval this evening.
I mean, it does go back to council to take action on. So there is another review period there and a chance to intervene as well, right? So I mean, another chance for public discussion on it at the council level.
Yeah.
Just want to clarify that. Any other discussion?
I would agree that we need to listen to our constituents, and it's not an opinion. We have to listen to what their pain points are and their suggestions. And so I think we should table it and build more into this with a little bit more detail, or discuss it right now.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor for approving this as presented. We do have a second. Mr. Cookman, would you like to say a few words on it?
If I could, thank you. Dwayne Cookman, 543 West Stanton. You know, I moved back to the area. I'm going to give you a little bit of history, okay? I grew up in this area, and there was a lot, you know, I'm going to say, not very good buildings. I live on Stanton Avenue, and Stanton Avenue was not a good place in the seventies and sixties, okay? I think a lot of the developers had purchased, because there are a lot of rental properties now that they fixed up, and now there's homes, rental properties on Stanton Avenue. But then you take a look at that, and how many people are owner-occupied in Fergus Falls? And how many are rentals? You know what the percentage is? I know a number, approximately. Approximately, how many, you think? It was residential homes, around seven hundred. Okay. And seven hundred homes... Registered. Owner-occupied? No, no, no.
Rental.
Rental. Right. Owner-occupied, probably thirty percent actually own their home and live in it. In what direction you want to go here, okay? When you talk about people have garages that are full of stuff? I'm one. I park my stuff outside, because I had to give up another house, okay? I live in Fergus Falls, and I pay taxes. I have a small house. How many properties do you own? Because I only own one. I have a second lot, and I'd like to have a bigger building, because I purchased, or not purchased, I rent two storage units, because I have too much stuff, okay? ATVs, boats. It's because what I've earned through my work, okay?
Mr. Cookman, we do have to take the vote here, okay?
I understand, okay? But you have people that want to spend money, and I guess I would entertain the thought, I think the city council wants more income, okay? If you're adding value added, okay, let's not split hairs. Let's try, say, okay, you can put a garage there, you're going to get taxed like the same square footage as a house. Now it's the incentive to make that a living quarters, not a storage set. If you could take that into consideration. But I think that the end result is more income for the city of Fergus Falls.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cookman. We are going to call for the vote here.
I don't even think what he proposed is legal, because that comes into the county and how they assess property. We're, no, we're talking about what the city wanted with bringing in more tax value, and I get that. I'm for that, too. But let's be thoughtful about the long run here, and if we can have a garage and a house on some of these lots rather than just a garage. And like I said, the difference between 2027, 27, and that garage, and they have it listed on the tax roll as a resident, but it's not. They collect fourteen fifty-four. And if you had a $500,000 house on it, you'd be collecting fifty-seven hundred.
Okay, thank you, Laurie. We are going to call for the vote here. So we do have a motion on the floor approving the ordinance as presented. We have a second. Should we do roll call vote? Yes, no? Do roll call? Okay.
Can you read roll, Jill? Can you read roll, a roll call?
Yep.
Uh, no.
No.
Shoe, shoe it?
Shoe.
Yep, no.
Yes.
Listen. Yes.
I also vote yes. So we have a tie.
And no chair to break a tie.
So procedurally, what happens?
There's no majority, right? So...
I think if they all thought a majority vote, I don't know.
I am not an attorney. That seems, so the motion initially was to approve it as is. That motion did not get a majority vote, so I think it fails and goes back to where you had it initially, which is someone needs to make a new motion based on...
Could I ask Mr. Kwame or Mr. Layton, do you know procedurally how that would work, being council members?
I think what Clara said is accurate. Unless you have a majority vote in favor, it fails.
Okay.
That's how I would understand it. And I think that's the way Clara spoke it.
Okay, so we do have a tie. The ordinance as presented did not get a majority vote, so that motion fails. Back to the commission.
What were some of the, just again, some of the conditions that we discussed? Things that we would have wanted, that we did advocate for in the first draft that went up to city council. I, you know, to your point, Mr. Koundi, this is going to be debated again. We could lose requirements that we see here, or there could be requirements added, okay? Now, if I were to go back, because originally I was against standalone garages, I was. And I had a list of requirements myself that I don't necessarily see here, and that were actually brought up again tonight. And one was that there should be allowable space for there to be a residential house on it sometime, okay? It doesn't need, the garage doesn't need to be at the very front of the lot. It doesn't need to be at the center. It could be towards the back third, for example. And then it allows both uses potentially. Yeah, and I guess one of them that would be, again, I think, this having failed as presented, my take right now is still that something that looks like this is still what's going to go up to the council. That's what they've, that's what they want to look at. So, you know, one of the things that I don't see in here that I would like to see is some connection to a homeowner in Fergus Falls. Whether it's, again, I've heard at some of our past meetings, you have to have a home across the street, or within two hundred feet, or, you know, something like that, that puts a home near it at least.
So what happens, let's say there's snowbirds. They rent an apartment here. They want a garage that they own to keep their car here, and they own a residence in Florida. I mean, they're not tied to any other primary residence here. We could hypothetical this thing to death.
Which we've done before.
Right. And we can speculate that a house could get built there, a house could get built there. But that's not the reality. The reality of it is, we have vacant lots, we have people wanting to buy them, and we have people wanting to build a garage on it. So let's take the investment when we can take the investment, rather than hold out on a speculation. That's my personal feeling on that. That's why I voted in favor of this. I'm not really even strong on the conditional use side of things. Because when it comes to us as a commission, what conditions are you going to put on it that aren't already laid out in the ordinance? It's really just a chance for intervenors to step in and voice their opposition to it, which is fine. I get that. We kind of workshopped what that might look like as far as neighborhood input, neighboring property owners' input. Again, if this is the direction that the council wants to go, it's a conditional use permit. They can apply different conditions. They have a chance to have a public hearing, hear intervention on it. I don't know what else that you, we want to do as a commission to satisfy what the council is ultimately asking for. You know, Mr. Fullerton, you seconded it and then voted against it. So, I mean, what language would have to be in here for you to support it? Because you'd kind of be the swing vote at this point.
Oh, I don't know that I'd be the swing vote. I, you know, I think, I get the feeling that everyone's on the same page, that this is going forward in some form.
Right.
What form that looks like, I don't know. And again, my concern is exactly the one you've articulated, that conditions are not likely to be placed on this. I think, I think we have to have elements that can be, boxes that can be checked so that people have an expectation, that they know when they apply, that it's probably going to be granted.
Okay.
So, and again, I'm throwing out discussion points that we discussed before. But before, we were looking at an ordinance draft that was very different, an amendment draft that was very different than this, and something that ultimately didn't go forward. So, you know, again, what, when we had the discussion before, we came out a different direction. Now I think we do have to come out in the direction of sending something up.
Sure.
I think. That's my, that's my take on it now. That's the difference from where I was at before. The question is just what matters to us, I guess, to include in there.
Okay. So which direction would the commission like to go? Are you, do we feel comfortable making an amendment to the ordinance as presented? Do we table the manner for further workshop? What direction would the commission like to head? Or do we just flat-out say, no, we didn't agree, city council?
So I was, I was on the first, I'd say, subcommittee that took a look at if we did have an ordinance for a standalone garage, what would that look like? And I helped prepare that. So I would be happy to volunteer, now, to look at this language in detail and to maybe add some comments back to the council. I don't know if there's anyone else who would be interested in looking at that with me. But I think that would be a good exercise. You know, I don't think it's unreasonable to wait till our next meeting to do the final approval, to send it up.
Okay.
And I would agree with that. I think, again, timing, timing aside, you know, I think a little bit more time with this, and then let's just say that we are going to make a decision at the next meeting, and everybody's going to review it, and everybody's going to have at least one thought.
I would also maybe like to visit with the city staff, who is going to be, like, enforcing this, to see if, from their perspective, if they have any enforcement issues. And, you know, if there's anything problematic here that they would see, you know, because if, let's, let's say we do have garages that exist today that shouldn't be there, you know, how did that happen? And why, you know, why is that not being enforced? And what's, you know, how do you deal with those repercussions if, you know, we are in violation? And I agree with you, Nate, that I don't think the conditional use permit is a great way to go, because how do you apply that consistently across time? So it's just not about your neighbors going to complain against you, so there gets conditions put on. How do we, how do we make it clear so that everyone's going to be held at the same standard? I think we have to go back to this language that the council gave us as the standard. I don't see additional conditions being put on during conditional use permits consistently. So I'd rather take the time till our next meeting to see if we can add anything to this to make it better.
Okay, so your recommendation is to send it back to the subcommittee?
To look at, to prepare, to provide those extra comments at our next meeting for approval.
Okay.
Or discussion, or whatever we decide to do.
So Clara, just, I mean, in Mayor Hicks's letter, he referenced sixty days. Do we have to turn around a recommendation back to the city council in sixty days as well? Or did we just have to take action on this?
Yeah, my understanding of the rule is that, once it's returned to you, the Planning Commission, to review, you get sixty days. If you have not provided some sort of recommendation or finalized your discussion at the end of that sixty days, I believe the council can simply act on it.
Okay.
So that gives us until September 21st. I believe we have another meeting scheduled prior to that?
We'd have an August regular session.
We have an August, so what if we come to that meeting to, let's, let's, let's put this to rest with comments?
Who's going to be on the subcommittee?
I would like to be.
I would like to be.
Okay.
So we'll have to meet, set that.
Let's speak afterwards and see what kind of file sharing we can do, too, to, you know, do much of that independently before we meet.
Yeah, and the subcommittee will be able to share with you, Clara, the, so that, so that we can look at things in advance? Is that correct?
Yeah.
And that's, and that's, if it's three of you, that's less than a quarter of you, so you can communicate with each other as well. So I can help facilitate that, or if you already have contact information, you can connect.
Okay, so we have a direction to head. Let's take some formal action on this. So is there a motion to send ordinance number 69 to Planning Commission Subcommittee to review and make recommendations back to our regularly planned Planning Commission meeting in August? meeting in August?
I make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. We do not have any old business. Okay, that's all right. Go ahead, Clara.
This is going back to our discussion of the IUP. I got nervous and forgot to mention that we did receive one outreach from a community member. It was from Midwest Printing. They sent a letter that is, that was in your packet. Just based on what they know of the IUP case, that was their response to it. And so the letter's in your packet and is available for public review and it will be passed on to the city council.
Thank you, Clara. Mr. Layton?
Thank you for your time. In regards to the garage, I think we should go back to that initial email I sent that started this program. It's more than just a garage on a lot. I think the council needs direction, the city needs direction as to, you know, what is this? A garage, a nanny house, a barnium, quonset? So there is a clear understanding. And I respect everyone's opinion as to how we got to a lot that has just a garage. On Ralph's current recommendations, he talks about no animals. And someone asked, well, is that my dog? He says, no, that's farm animals. There's a prime example that the ordinance should read farm animals. We're not talking chickens. And if this guy wants his dog in that garage, that's fine. Number two, if this lot does not have an egress, it shouldn't be the owner's responsibility to put an egress in. Number three, it doesn't need to be cement. We have homes that don't have cement driveways. This is a standalone garage, I'm not so sure it needs to be cemented. Number four, we have a lot of homes in town that have garages. And some of them do park their vehicles in their garage, and the boat's on the outside, the trailer's on the outside. I don't believe that that restriction should be placed on a garage that's a standalone on a lot. In the winter, we want vehicles off the drive, off the streets. Why can't I have it on my lot? So I'm more than welcome to work with the subcommittee. I appreciate your time, but I would like to see the committee meet, if you will, before you have your next meeting and come together with some of these. And I'll be more than glad to share my notes. Clara knows how to get ahold of me. I don't have all the answers either. I've listened and learned a lot tonight. We all have different situations. Some of the garages that I see aren't a lot that's too small to build a home. There's lots that are too big, that can just have a garage. It would look odd. So I'm kind of back and forth on a conditional permit because the next council may be all whacked one way or the other, or whacked the other way. They let you put up a tin shed. Another definition would be, what's a shop? I think if this garage is used for personal use, and I'm a woodworker or I'm a welder, I should be able to use it, no different than when you see someone else's store. So I'd be more than glad to help any way I can. I appreciate your efforts on this. It's not an easy one. But we have constituents who need and want their own garage on a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Layton. And I would encourage anybody that has feelings one way or the other, suggestions to, you know, give us that feedback. Get that to city hall, get that to the subcommittee members, get that to a planning commission member, a city council member. We're making a decision for our entire community and we don't want to necessarily do that in a vacuum, right? We recognize that there's all different opinions, preferences, situations out there, and it's not going to be right for everybody, no matter what we do, right? So if you feel strongly about this or have good ideas or suggestions or concerns, we do want to hear those. So we don't have any other business on the agenda tonight, and therefore we are adjourned.